Let's call the order. The City of Milton, Virtual Common Council Meeting Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Linda is motioning to approve the agenda, and Devon is seconding that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Devon, would you like to lead us in that? And I'll move my laptop so y'all can see the flag. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by common council action. Inga, do we have anybody that would like to comment now or when an agenda item comes up that they're interested in?
Um, I'll go through each person that doesn't, that's not a department head or on council, just to make sure. Amy, did you want to comment now or did you want to wait for a specific agenda item?
I can wait till the agenda comes up.
Okay. Um, Melissa, did you want to speak now or wait for the agenda item?
I, it, I don't, it doesn't matter, I've never had to do this before, so.
Okay, and, and you're here for Casey's, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Mayor, do you have a preference for her to speak now or wait until the agenda item?
I don't have a preference. We can wait till the agenda item. As, uh, just let us know what, uh, when the agenda item comes up that you want to talk on.
Um, and then that leaves Matt. Did you want to speak now?
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering how I go about if I could get something on the agenda? So we could vote on.
Uh, so Matt, you can, um, leave a voicemail or send an email or call either Al Hulick or myself. And if you want, I can have Inga put our emails in the chat room. And that would be a good way to contact us and request something to be put on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So Matt, it's in the chat room right now. If you, um, take a look at that, you'll see both of our emails there.
Now, is that normal way you go about getting something on the agenda? Or they said I could ask for it right now to be put on the agenda?
Well, I think that's, that would be the best way. So we could, um, give you the proper time and attention.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out because you, you gave me misinformation now. Now you're saying to write it in? And before you guys told me to get on here and ask just when you got a public comment to say I would like to get weed decriminalized in Milton on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't speak to you personally. So, um, I think the best way, so we make sure that we are understanding exactly what you are requesting, that you would send us an email. And then if there, if you would like to have a conversation about that, we can exchange phone numbers. So.
So saying now saying, you know, I would like to have weed decriminalized in the City of Milton is not a good time?
So we don't have that on, on the agenda right now to talk about?
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm trying to get on for the next, next council meeting, be on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, if you would prefer that we contact you, you can put your contact information on the chatroom and we can contact you. And I'm going to move on to the next item.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, the next item is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? I see Larry raising his hand.
Second.
And Bill seconding it. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding an application for Class A retailer's license intoxicating liquor for consumption away from the present premises where sold from Casey's Marketing Company, Casey's General Store, number 1992, located at 464 South John Paul Road.
I think Mark has a comment.
Mark?
Yes, Mayor, at least my copy of the agenda, so is number five. Mayor proclamation?
Yes, should we go back to number five? Uh, there's a mayor proclamation declaring Arbor Day, uh, September 19th, 2020, in the City of Milton. And I'll read that. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was observed, first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Milton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate the day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees who gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I'll sign it this 15th day of September, 2020. I know we all love trees in the City of Milton.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for not letting me skip over that because I don't have my glasses with me today. Okay, so back to item number seven. And, um, Al, do you want to talk about that, give us the details?
Yes, so item number seven is a request from Casey's General Store, which is, uh, the current location located on, on John Paul, uh, South John Paul Road. They currently have a Class A beer and wine license, but they're looking to, uh, I guess, expand their license to include hard liquor. So the intent, uh, to sell intoxicating liquor or hard liquor and wine for consumption off-premise. And they are looking to expand their premise to include, uh, their entire lot. So they would be allowed to, from what I understand, based on what LeAnn, our clerk, has told me, uh, to allow drive-up or pickup service, curbside service, similar to, uh, what, what is being seen in other retail locations. So it's really kind of a two-pronged, uh, request. Class A licenses are different than Class B licenses. Uh, Class A licenses, again, are for alcohol to be consumed off-premise, and there are no state-imposed quotas similar to Class B licenses. So the city holds a discretion as to whether they would issue a license, uh, in this case, an expansion of their license or not. So there's no self-impose, or there's no, um, state-imposed quotas. Uh, however, the city does have the discretion to deny a license if one is requested, uh, and, and as long as a reason is provided. Casey's, I believe, received their Class A license back in 2017, I think the memo notes, uh, for fermented malt beverages only. And Mark, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add to that?
I, I think you gave a good summary of the, of the relevant facts. I think people know where this is located. You've also provided the council with the provisions of Section 14 hyphen 400, which give out, give standards for issuances, issuance, excuse me, of licenses. And then, um, the Section 14, 392D, which requires a policy relating to responsible alcohol sales and service. So you have that. So that can guide you in terms of your discussion and decision regarding whether to issue the Class A intoxicating liquor license, or the premises requested, or for a different description of the premises, and whether or not there's any conditions on that if you do. Uh, this is a new license, and so, uh, while you, you don't have unlimited discretion, in other words, it needs to be reasons reasonably related to the, uh, application, you do have more discretion than if it were a license renewal. And so that's all, as I said, laid out there in the memo to you with, with the standards in Section 14, 400. Uh, then again, there's not limited specifically to only those, but they do need to be relevant factors. They can't just be because, um, I, I just don't like Casey's or I love Casey's. Either way, that can't, that really can't be the, a relevant factor. So that's all I would have to add right now.
So does the council kind of understand the, their, their parameters in this discussion based on the memo?
I do.
I'll just, I'll go around like we usually do.
Okay.
Is that okay? Or Al, do you have some more to say or?
Nope, nope, I don't have any more to say. I think that's fine to go around. If questions come up, Mark Schrader and I will do our best to answer them.
Um, did, did you want to give Melissa a chance to speak now or maybe just wait for any questions from the council?
Melissa, did you want to speak now or wait?
I guess I'll just wait until somebody has questions.
Okay, sure. Right, so I'll start with Linda. Questions, comments?
I, I guess I'm not real clear. They want to add the hard liquor to the beer, and they also want to do a drive-up? Can they not just, could, they could be doing a drive-up service now, couldn't they?
So it wouldn't be, I think, just to be clear, it wouldn't be a drive-up like a traditional drive-up, like a drive-up window at a McDonald's. I think what they're requesting is curbside service. So if someone pulls up, they would be, and, and orders something, a beer or, or intoxicating liquor, they would be able to walk it out to their car. So currently, no, they would not be able to do that because the premise is restricted only to the building itself.
Linda, anything else?
Well, that's what a lot of people, that, they, a lot of businesses are doing that so that they can bring stuff out, so that the customers that don't feel like going into the businesses have to do it. Um, I'm not real sure about why the need to add the hard liquor, though. I feel like if they've already got a license and that has been successful, I, is it just because there may, they want to add this other to it?
That might be, that might be a question from Melissa. I'm not sure that I know the rationale behind it. It, it is, as, as Attorney Schrader indicated, a new license, and as part of their new license, they've expanded the premise. So I believe, and Attorney Schrader can correct me if I'm wrong, the council could agree to grant the new license but restrict the premise to the building as it currently is, or I guess not, so.
Yes, that's correct. First of all, the existing Class A beer license, we'll call it that, as Al noted, has, as its descrip, has its premises and has since the beginning, the building. That's it. Their request, this is the Class A intoxicating liquor that they're asking to have a larger premises. So theoretically, if, if the council wanted to approve that description of the premises, they still would not be able to deliver beer outside because that's covered by a different Class A license. So, um, yeah, and, and Al's otherwise correct that, um, this is a new license, and so you're, you're judging it anew as to whether or not you're going to grant it, and if so, under what, if any, restrictions.
Hello? Melissa, did you want to comment?
Yes, um, the store will actually not be getting the hard liquor itself. Apparently, to have the curbside for the store, they had to apply for the hard liquor license also. But they will not be getting hard liquor, they have no space for it, they have their beer, but apparently to get that curbside, which we now do on our online ordering and stuff, they had to have this other liquor license that included hard liquors and stuff. That helps.
Mark, did you want to comment on that? Is that an ordinance or a statute?
Well, it's not an ordinance. Uh, if it's a statute, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, couldn't they just request, uh, change to their premise?
They could come in and, and ask for an amendment to the premises in their existing license.
Right, and we've seen that before with Class B licenses. I've never seen it with a Class A, but it would, the process would be the same.
Yes.
Theoretically, yeah. So yeah, I'm not aware of a, of any triggering mechanism to amend a premise to expand or request a new license. So I, I, I wasn't aware of that caveat of the request or, or, and I, I don't know that the clerk was either, I'm not sure.
No.
But just, just to clarify, Melissa, Casey's, the store, is planning to sell wine, though, if this application is approved, correct?
I have not heard anything about them selling anything than the beer that they sell now.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is a good point. If you wanted to sell wine, you would be required to, they would be required to request a Class A intoxicating liquor license, is that correct, Mark?
Perhaps, I don't know, I'd need to look at that.
Because the Class A, they currently have a Class A retailer's license for fermented malt beverages, and I guess technically wine is not a fermented malt beverage. So if wine is considered a part of the intoxicating liquor license, um, I'm not sure. But based on what Melissa had said, it doesn't sound like they're interested in selling wine either. So if, if that is the case, um, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, um, if the, if the request simply is to expand the premise to the parking lot area to allow for curbside pickup, I think that can be addressed through another mechanism that would not then put, uh, Casey's in the council in a position to expand a license. Because once it's granted, uh, if, if the council was to go forward with this, even though Casey's current intent, intentions on September 15th are not to sell hard liquor or wine, um, once it's granted, um, Casey's may change their mind and, and that would be, they would have every right to then serve, to sell intoxicating liquors and wine at that point. And again, if the council's okay with that, then, then we can move forward with this approach. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear that there are, um, some variables to that.
Teresa, go ahead.
You're muted.
I would like it clarified before I vote on anything. So if you can straighten it out without any changes, uh, that's terrific. Uh, if we need to make some modifications with the licensure, bring it back for our next meeting.
Uh, Bill, do you want to comment or question?
As I'm listening, it sounds as if we could move ahead with the approval as it is on the agenda, and Casey's would be able then to do the curbside on the wine. The kicker, the caveat that Al was mentioning is that would then open it up for liquor sales, hard liquor sales, uh, in the future. So my understanding would be, um, a, you know, it, it does sound better to me if, uh, in fact, the request is specifically what they want. And if what they want is to be able to do the, the, uh, the wine and curbside, um, that's the one that's unclear to me, whether the wine and curbside is necessary, given the, um, uh, the, the, the nature of what's being requested here.
So LeAnn has jumped on, LeAnn is our city clerk. And just to kind of bring LeAnn up to speed, as you're aware, uh, on the agenda this evening, there is a Class A intoxicating liquor license request for Casey's General Store. And in, as a part of that, uh, request, they have asked to expand their premise to include their parking lot. Melissa Frank is on the, on the call as well at this time, and she has indicated that Casey's has no interest in selling intoxicating liquor or wine and merely wants to expand their premise. And it was her impression, uh, that they needed to require, they needed to request this Class A intoxicating liquor license in order to expand their premise. And as Attorney Schrader and I have pointed out, that's not necessarily the case. If they simply wanted to maintain a Class A fermented malt beverage license and expand their premise, they could do so through a separate request. They wouldn't have to have a Class A intoxicating liquor license simply to expand their premise. So if their only goal is to expand the premise, that can be handled through a separate action. It can't be handled on the agenda item that's on the agenda for this evening. Uh, but that is, if, was that your understanding as well, LeAnn, or, or not?
Um, not completely. I guess I did have a conversation with their licensing agent, uh, Mikael Lage, um, earlier this year when they renewed their, um, Class B for beer license. Um, I noticed that the premise was changed on that renewal application, so I contacted Michael and asked if that was an error or if they were wanting to change the premise. Um, and at that point, Michael said that, um, it was believed to be, maybe it was just an error, because I explained then that if they wanted to change the premise, um, you can't do that on a renewal application, but you can do that on a change of premise action. And they said they would get back to me about that. Um, and I didn't hear back, so then, um, ultimately then, Michael emailed me later and asked about applying for the Class A intoxicating liquor license, and then subsequently sent me the application. Um, so maybe there's some confusion there, um, on that, but that was our discussion back in, at the renewal time.
So their license got renewed, though?
The license got renewed, but with the same premise that it's always had, which is basically just their store, not the parking lot.
And just for beer, malt liquor, or?
Correct.
Well, correct.
Uh, Larry, any questions or comments? And then Melissa, after I go through the council, I'm gonna, uh, come back to you, if that's okay? Okay, Larry?
Um, no, I have a question, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to ask it until we know which way they're going. But, but I'll ask it anyway. Have we had, have we had any violations regarding sales, inappropriate sales or sale to buy from, uh, from Casey's location at the current time? Anybody?
Chief Mark, or, or LeAnn, would you, has Casey's had any violations with their alcohol license since they were granted a Class A fermented malt beverage, uh, in June of 2017? I believe that is your question, right, Larry?
Go ahead, thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Same here, I'm not aware of any.
Thank you. It's the only question I have, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Devon?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Ryan?
I should agree with Teresa, I think we should wait till we figure out which route they actually want to go and then make a decision at that point.
Melissa, any final comments?
Um, no, all I know is that they just want to add the curbside. We're not doing wine or hard liquor. I, that's all, I, I just got an email saying that I had to be at this meeting, so.
Same with me.
I mean, I, they didn't give me details, they just told me it was the renewal license, and it was to add curbside, and that was all I got.
Um, so we could, um, have a motion to, uh, table this until we get clarification?
Yes, because I will email Mikail and find out what in the world they want, because until that store were to get remodeled or made bigger, they would never have anywhere for hard liquor or wine, so.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, Ryan motioned, and Linda seconded, to table the Casey's request for further clarification. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that, uh, agenda item will be tabled, and, um, if you can just get back to us on that and, um, email us or call us, and, uh, we'll get you back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
LeAnn, is there anything else that they need to do?
Um, no, I guess if, uh, Michael just wants to get back in touch with me and let me know which direction they want to go, if they do indeed just want to do the change of premise, I can walk them through that process. So.
Okay. And thank you, Melissa, for coming. Um, our next item is discussion and possible action regarding applications for Class A retailer's license for fermented malt beverages and a Class A retailer's license intoxicating liquor for consumption away from the present premises where sold from, any, any help on this pronunciation? Dolgan Corp.
LLC.
LLC, General Store, 6787 Dollar General Store, 6787, located at 383 South John Paul Road.
So this is?
Amy, are you, you're with this item?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Amy, are you with the, the Dollar General request?
Yes, yes, I am with Dollar General.
Okay, and do you want to, uh, talk after Al speaks or after Al and the council speak?
Uh, yeah, we can do that, that's fine.
Okay. Al, go ahead.
So this is a brand-new request for a new, um, establishment at the Dollar General. It currently, uh, dissimilar to Casey's currently, they do not have a Class A fermented malt beverage license or a Class A intoxicating liquor license. So this request is for both of those to be sold away from premise or to be consumed away from premise at their facility on John Paul. So again, this is a Class A, not capped by state quotas, uh, so this, but the same rules apply as Attorney Schrader outlined in terms to, of the Casey's request. But this is for a Class A fermented malt beverage, uh, sale as well as intoxicating liquor sale.
Okay, Ryan, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, not yet.
Devon?
No.
Larry?
No, I don't, thank you.
Teresa?
I guess I have some, you know, with regard to the space available in the store, and, um, yeah, I guess that's where I'd start. Uh, I have some concerns. I also have some questions, uh, I guess for Al. Who else in the community already has this licensure, um, so that I understand better the spread of where those licensures already exist?
Sure, so for a Class A beer, we'll just call it Class A beer. So for a Class A beer, we'll just call it Class A beer. So for Class A beer licenses, The Beverage Mart on the city's west side does, Casey's, as we previously talked about, Cowley's Piggly Wiggly, and the east side Quick Trip all have a Class A beer license. In terms of a Class A intoxicating liquor license, only The Beverage Mart and Cowley's Piggly Wiggly has it. So those are the only two Class A intoxicating liquor establishments in the community at this time.
Okay.
So there's four places where you can buy beer, two places where you can buy hard liquor, if that surmises it. Is that correctly, LeAnn?
Yes.
Good.
Anything else, Teresa?
No. I mean, I might come back to that, but I think those were important pieces of information to consider.
Okay, thanks. Bill?
I guess my only question is something that Amy might address when we get there, and that is whether or not they had envisioned the curbside pickup. As I've read the information, it sounds as if the way that this is written would not allow for the curbside pickup, that what's being described is the store itself and the storage room, as opposed to including the rest of the property. And we can address that, I think, when Amy speaks as far as what's their intent, so that we know whether we're able to move forward on this tonight or not.
I'll ask Linda if she has any questions or comments, and then Amy, I'll go to you. Is that okay?
Sounds great.
Okay. Linda?
Muted.
Sorry. So is this the same type of a situation here to where the purpose here is to be able to bring it outside the premise, which is that your plans to do that? Or is it just to sell in-store and stock in-store? And then my other question is, are you expanding at all the building? Because it seems like it's a pretty tight space, so I'm interested in what Amy has to say.
Amy, go ahead.
All right. So we do not intend on doing curbside pickup. We do offer pickup for customers. They can order online and pick up. However, we do not have that extended to any alcohol in any of our stores. So this is for in-store sales only. As far as space, we intend to really only carry about $1,500 in inventory. We are doing one to two coolers, and those are single-door coolers of beer, and we will designate a four-foot space for wine. The intention is to only carry beer and wine. We really dedicate a small portion of our sales floor for those products. We'll stock minimal excess inventory as well. Our intent is only to stock an excess of maybe one week of inventory in the back, but not much. I think those are the two main questions.
Yep. Linda and Teresa, did you get your questions answered? Linda, yes or no? She's shaking her head yes. Teresa?
I mean, I guess I have that... I would further, though, discuss the idea of the locations of, you know, when we discussed the licensure of the intoxicating liquor, we decided at that time that we would try to keep those limited within the city of Milton. And that's where we ended up having a limitation of the number on each end of town, so that we didn't continue to increase those numbers of licensures. And we ended up with, you know, a liquor store on the west end of town. We kept it at the grocery store where it had a larger space. And in any case, just please keep that in mind when you're thinking of how you react to this type of licensure.
Bill, any other questions or comments?
No other questions.
Just going to go back around to double-check with everybody. Larry?
No questions.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
It's real meaning. And Ryan, any questions or comments?
Do you have, like, cameras on the premises and stuff, just in case, or security? Be able to watch?
We do.
Okay. Just curious about that. I think we've asked that before when, like, Casey's came before us a couple of years ago and things like that. So I was just curious. That's the only thing I had.
Bill? No?
Actually, I remember the presentation from Casey's when their attorney came and made kind of a complete presentation on training of staff, that kind of thing. I'm assuming, Amy, that there would be additional training for the staff and security procedures. The other thing that came up with the Casey's issue was the size of the facility and being able to monitor the product, so that the product wasn't likely to be, you know, stuck in a backpack, you know, that kind of thing. So location in the store might also be of some importance and significance. What's the practice typically in your stores?
So I can address the training piece quickly. We do have, of course, kind of like a course content outline for every employee that comes in and works at Dollar General that has a wine and beer license. It's about 30 minutes. We teach them everything from how to appropriately look at an ID, ask for an ID, as well as understanding the effects of alcohol and recognizing behaviors that might show that we have somebody who is drinking. They're trained not to sell to somebody who's intoxicated, much like you would do if you were a bartender. In addition, we also have all of our key holders or managers execute the state-required training. These associates are not allowed to even hit the registers or work on the floor unless they've actually gone through that training. As far as location, it will be immediately to the right when you walk in the front door. It is in full sightline of our cash registers, and it actually really is a small section of our stores. It's compacted in a four-by-four-foot area where you can access the wine on one side, the cooler of beer on the other, and then occasionally we will do a stackout of cases of beer on the floor in front of that as well.
Ryan, you look like you wanted to make a comment? No?
In the end, what I wanted to ask was the location. So I remember talking about that at Casey's, that being a big thing, and he reminded me of it, but he asked the question, so...
The other thing that came up during the Casey's discussion was, like, advertisement? Was there some restriction that was put on Casey's? I can't remember the specifics of it.
Yeah, they were not allowed to have any advertising that faced the street, so anything that was exterior to the building. So they couldn't have it on the exterior of the building, and they couldn't have it in the windows facing the street. And that was really because of the proximity to the high school, if I remember correctly, and the amount of high school kids that come in there. So that was my recollection of it, but I know specifically they were limited in their... they could only do basically in-store advertising.
Thank you, Al.
Anything else for anybody?
Is this just beer and wine? Or are we talking...
Correct.
...hard liquor too with this license? Just beer and wine?
Well...
Just beer and wine.
Yeah, but to be clear, and I understand that that's Dollar General's desire, but, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out from my position that the license requested would grant them the ability to sell beer, wine, and intoxicating liquor. So although they may not desire to do that, similar to what we talked about just a moment ago with Casey's, that may be their position today, but if their position changed on that in the future, they would be able to, by right, be able to sell intoxicating liquor at their establishment without any fear of reprisal from the city, because that's the license that we issued them. So best intentions, you know, today may change with a different philosophy tomorrow. So again, not meant to be, you know, deprecating towards anybody, but just wanted to make sure folks are clear. Attached to the memo that LeAnn provided gives kind of Dollar General's overall alcohol beverage sales, and I do note, and again, Amy, I don't mean this to be contradictory to what you said, but it says, "Certain Dollar General stores sell beer, wine, and in some instances, liquor." So there are other establishments that Dollar General has that does sell liquor. Again, understanding that that's not the intent here, but it is within their portfolio to do so. And if this license was granted, the Class A intoxicating liquor license was granted, they would have the authority or they would have the ability to do so by right through the issuance of that license.
Amy, did you...
I just wanted to clarify that. Again, no disrespect, Amy.
Amy, did you...
No, it's okay. Understood. No, I don't at this time.
So they could apply for a license that didn't include the intoxicating beverages, correct?
Well, they could apply for just a Class A fermented malt beverage license, which they've done tonight. And then in addition to that, they've also requested a Class A intoxicating liquor license, which by, I don't know if it's by statutes or by ordinance, LeAnn or Mark can correct me, beer is lumped in with that intoxicating liquor portion of it. So I'm not aware, is there a Class A wine-only license? I know there's a Class B wine-only license, but I don't know in the state of Wisconsin, is there one?
No, you mean, when you said lumped in, you meant intoxicating liquor with wine? Yeah, that's correct. So it's, there's actually two licenses. It's the Class A fermented malt beverage, and then there's the Class A intoxicating liquor, which includes your hard liquor and your wine.
Yeah. And Al, is that, that's created by the state of Wisconsin, not, that's not a local ordinance, correct?
Correct, state of Wisconsin.
Yeah. So in the state of Wisconsin, the only way that you can have a, sell wine under a Class A license would be to be granted an intoxicating liquor license, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So really, it's, in this case, it's like all or just beer?
Yeah.
Or nothing. Or nothing.
There is no separate license, just for wine.
Yeah.
For Class A.
I'm willing to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
My move that we approve the licenses that are requested with the additional caveat that there be no outside advertising on the building or the windows of the premises.
Is there a second?
May I add something?
Are you abending your motion, or...
No, just to support my motion.
Oh, okay.
We've talked about supporting businesses in this community, and now we're debating about whether we're going to allow intoxicated alcohol to be served out of a building, out of a premise, in an operation that has been a mainstay of this community for several years. That's all I'm going to say.
Can I ask a question? At this time, do we need a second, first, or fourth question?
I'll second it, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Why is the request for not having signage on the outside? I know we did that for Casey's, because I think the reasoning was because of location in relationship to the school. I know this building is, you know, down the road a little bit farther, but I was just curious why that addition to the motion.
I wanted to be fair to everybody.
Most of the other businesses currently that have that don't have that same stipulation, though.
That was done before Casey's, so that's all.
I mean, as far as the signage goes...
We set a premise.
The only place that has that requirement is Casey's, the other ones don't.
Well, they're not far from the high school, but the real issue is we set a precedent before. So in fairness to them, that's why...
So you're thinking because they're still close to the high school, they're just a little bit down the road? Is that my understanding that's what you're saying, Larry?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I guess I have a question for Amy, I guess. How do you feel about that stipulation?
Well, traditionally, Dollar General does not advertise our beer and wine sales on our windows. We will advertise cigarettes, but I have not seen us do that with beer and wine, so I don't know that that would be a huge issue. I just would wonder if that would also apply to advertising for cigarettes as well.
I guess that we're not talking about that, so...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a separate license. Yeah, those are handled through a separate license.
Okay. Linda?
I guess I am, I'm not real sure about the intent of the hard liquor, and I would like to have that definite answer. You know, they, we know that they want to do the beer and the wine, and if they get this license, then yeah, down the road, they would be able to add the hard liquor. But can we get a definite on that, as to whether or not they're going to do that?
If we grant it...
Linda, I don't...
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't know that I can give you a definite for what the future holds. Dollar General is growing leaps and bounds and moving quickly. I can tell you that I have 16 stores within Wisconsin, some in Illinois. None of those stores have liquor in them. I believe the stores in our company that contain liquor are the ones that are, we have very few of them, but they're full-size grocery stores. They include produce and meat and those types of things. So that might be why the document states that there are some locations that have it.
Bill, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, then, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
There's... Devin, did you vote?
Yeah, same voted aye.
Oh, okay, all right. So I have Bill, Larry, Devin, and Ryan. Aye, is that correct? Okay. All those opposed?
Aye.
Teresa and Linda? And that motion carries.
So just to be clear, so Amy can report back. The license, the Class A fermented malt beverage and Class A intoxicating liquor license were approved with the requirement that there be no outdoor advertising on the building or in the windows that face the, you know, exterior advertising.
Okay.
Teresa, you wanted to make a comment quick?
Yeah, just, I'll limit it to one sentence. Just to note that this makes the ninth location to sell carryout beverages within one-half mile in Milton. Please keep that in mind, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Hmm.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding the 2021 Joint Powers Agreement with Rock County 911.
So I can let Scott take this one, if he's not too exhausted from his crossing-guard work today.
This is an annual document that is presented by the 911... This is an annual document that is presented by the 9-1-1 Center to all of the jurisdictions in which they dispatch for, which is everyone in Rock County. And it's basically some legal language that permits them to provide this service to us. And all five years I've been here, we've presented it and approved it.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No.
Lynda?
Nope.
Teresa?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Devin?
No.
Larry?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
There's a motion by Bill, a second by Lynda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That agreement is approved. On discussion and possible action regarding the 2020 concrete pavement maintenance bid award. So I'm not sure who's taking this one.
So I can let Mark take this one, since he's done all the work behind the scenes on it. So, Mark E., unless Mark S. wants to take it.
Well, this is a project to address some of the pavement support condition along Madison Avenue, and there's a spot along South Janesville Street. There is, I believe, five locations that will be addressed. We put a project out to bid because of the size of the project, the cost, estimated cost required publicly noticing and bidding. We received five bids for the project with the low bid being CPR, Inc. Their office is in Brookfield, but they do have an office in Edgerton. It's a contractor I have not worked with in the past. I did talk to the owner, and I followed up with a municipality that they had recently worked for, and they were given good reviews. So I would recommend approving the work. I went through, I talked to Dan, too, just to confirm the financial side, and there is funding available for the project. So I guess it's up to the council if you want to proceed or not.
So and just to be clear, Mark, this, so this is multiple locations across Madison, around, along Madison Avenue, in which the concrete has either, either fallen into disrepair or had a change in elevations, as well as some of the manholes as well, that, right, that have dipped?
Yeah, so the areas that are being repaired are mostly because of poor concrete pavement condition. Some of the concrete blowups that we've seen over the past few years, where the concrete joints heave a little bit, causes a bump. The pavement is cracking, breaking. Some of that is a result of the manholes moving or just any, anytime there's something in the concrete that's different than concrete, it does cause additional stress on the concrete. So, you know, the manholes that are in these areas will also be replaced. So they are new and adjusted. So to eliminate or minimize the bumps, I guess you could say, try to make it as smooth as possible for motorists.
So I know that that is, I just wanted to point that out, because I know that that's, I wouldn't say it's a common complaint, but it's something that we hear about a lot is on Madison Avenue, there are some manholes that are, that have kind of dipped over time, and this will address some. It may not address all of them, but it will address some of those, especially those that have failing concrete around them. And Mark, what is the timeline for the, these constructions to occur? Sorry to take everybody's questions if you've got them, but.
No, we have November 15th, I believe, is the completion date for the project. Concrete, if we do get some cold weather, they are able to install concrete in colder weather, so we won't run into a situation like we had where we got snow in October last year, and we were waiting for asphalt to be put down. So that, the snow could cause a delay, but it's not as if it can't be completed later than, than the snow would be, or after the snowfall would occur. The temperature isn't, isn't a concern like it is for the HMA, for the asphalt. And like Al said, there are certainly several areas on Madison Avenue that could use improvements. So we tried to pick out some of the worst of the worst for this, to try to fix those first and address the areas that have, we've received complaints and that are just pretty evident they're in poor condition.
When would this start?
Uh, so if it's awarded tonight, we'd send the agreements to the contractor tonight or tomorrow. As soon as they process the agreements, we, we get them back and then review their bonds and their paperwork. If everything looks good, it's really up to the contractor, but likely within the next two to three weeks, I would say.
And will Janesville Street be open before this starts?
I'm not gonna guarantee it, it'll be closed.
Okay, I'm forwarding all the Facebook comments to you then about both of them being under construction.
The Madison Avenue and Janesville Street will both be open. The Madison Avenue will have a lane restriction, 12-foot max, but it will be open with traffic flow in both directions for the duration of the project. That's a requirement of the project, so it will not be closed. There may be delays, but short delays, and it will always be open to traffic.
So it's not gonna impact school traffic at all, is what you're promising, right?
It will impact school traffic, but hopefully minimal.
Again, you will be getting those comments. Okay, um, Lynda, any questions, comments?
No.
Bill?
No comments.
No comment.
Devin?
No.
Larry?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Is there a motion? Lynda's raising her hand, Teresa's seconding it. Approve the 2020 concrete pavement maintenance bid award.
To CPR.
To CPR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. More road construction on the way. All right, everything that we have been waiting for, discussion and possible action on the development of 2020, 2024 strategic.
Well, I'm glad this was the most exciting thing for everyone's night. Um, did everyone get the email that I sent out earlier today, this afternoon, just with kind of a recap of some of the comments that I received back through email from individuals? If not, that's fine, I happen to have a Word document available here.
Are you gonna be sharing your screen, is that what you're saying?
I will, I will. So I don't know that, I don't know if it makes sense for us to go line by line for each of the items, or if you want to take some time and review them on your own. Kind of wanted to leave it up to the group. Or if you wanted to have some discussion, or if some of you who didn't provide comments via email, if you wanted to provide those now, and then we can talk about them and fit them into the, the structure.
Now, are you doing, are you taking comments from the community this Thursday regarding the, the same topics?
Yes, so what I will probably do after this meeting, depending on what type of feedback I get back from the group, is take this document and send it out to the community workshop group, so they have it for discussion on Thursday. And then if they have additional items that they'd like to see, then we can add those in as well.
But then you would, and is, is that the, for this portion, is that the last activity to do is to do that community group and then bring everything back to the council? I'm just talking about this specific area.
Yep, and then on the 29th, we have a special meeting scheduled, so we can go over everything again, finalize it, make sure everyone's comfortable with it, or if we need to do more research on a certain thing or something like that, then we have time to do that as well.
So.
So maybe the first piece is, is everyone in agreement on kind of the themes or goals, the five of them that we established?
Can you share your screen?
Yeah, let me just find one that shows. Bill, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I really like what's here. My only negative is I think we overuse the word maintain. And to me, the number of times maintain is there kind of is an indication of not forward movement. You know, we're maintaining this and maintaining that. One, one word that may sound a little bit more active, that has almost same meaning is sustain. So, you know, we might look at where we've used maintain and choose to use a more active term, I guess.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. There's a lot of, I guess, wordsmithing that we need to do still to make sure that it's communicating what we want it to, and I think that's a good point, that, that we can take a look at and make sure that it's communicating what we want it to communicate as well.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I think the, the areas, the areas are fine, and, you know, I really like where it's going. It's, and it's, it's not just the, the wordsmithing necessarily. It's kind of the attitude that's portrayed and just wanting to make it sound a little forward.
Yeah, that makes sense. Anyone else have any comments?
Inga?
Yeah.
I forgot, when I sent you my stuff this afternoon, the cemetery improvement project, it didn't include that in there. I believe I included the Pioneer Pro Heart idea and the bike trail, pedestrian trail for North Janesville, but I also had sent something, put together a one-page idea of improving the visibility and the historic value of the Milton East Cemetery.
So where do you think the Milton East Cemetery project would fall? Which.
Well, I thought maybe historic, but I'm not sure. I'll, I'll leave that to the group. You know, the one that talks about preserving Milton's. I forgot, and I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, um.
I just realized I didn't include it.
So we have affordability and financial stability, safe, inclusive, welcoming community, diverse opportunities for fun and lifelong learning, high-performing organization with professional staff, and environment for business success with thoughtful growth and development.
I think that lifelong learning one, because my idea would be that we document all the known graves and, and try to gather some historic information about those families in some sort of a documentation on the website of the city, so people could look up, oh, the Smith family, this is what they did, maybe they were lumberjacks or lumbermen. That was my idea.
Okay, yeah, I added it to there. Are, are there any other items specifically that individuals had thought of that they'd like to see added into the, the document? Do you want to go goal by goal and look at it? And I can share my screen?
Probably not a bad idea.
Okay. So this is the first one, the affordability and financial stability. So it's to maintain or increase the affordability of living in Milton while making informed short-term and long-term decisions to maintain the financial stability of the city of Milton. Does that make sense? Or, Bill, would you think that maybe use like sustain instead of maintain in that instance would make sense?
Here, there might even be a different word. We could improve the affordability. So, you know, improve might be a way to get rid of one of the other maintains and.
What's everyone think about that?
I like that, because I think that's, that's been a theme that's come up across the board, that there, that we're actually lacking in that area.
And I'll track the changes in this, so then, when I send it out, then everyone can kind of see those.
It also makes sense to have it improved, because a lot of the stuff mentioned below is kind of things to improve that anyway. It's not necessarily to maintain.
Yeah.
And just, just a suggestion from listening to, to your concerns, another word you can consider is the word enhance.
I thought of that word, too, and I just want to let you know that's the first time that Mark has spoken, I think.
I like it.
I thought he was gonna say something about your attorney.
Quality, quantity, yeah.
I have a question about the last, excuse me, the last objective.
This one?
Yeah, develop a city budget with no more than 6% increase over the previous year.
That one was from Larry, so I can have him talk about it, but maybe first I'll have Al or Dan just talk about historically where we've been at?
Can I just say something about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
You know, I worked, in working with previous councils historically, anytime that there was a dollar limit put on something or a percentage, it always just seemed to lock up the council. And so I don't know if that's actually something that we should put here as an objective. I, I mean, can we not put a 6%? Can we just reword that a little bit, maybe? I don't know how to reword it, though.
I put that in there mainly because I just, we're, we do a good job as a council, the current council, but I've seen other councils just start spending through the roof.
Right.
The idea was to, if you want to improve the quality of life and the ability, affordability for people living in the community, one way to do that is to keep the incremental tax increases within reason. And so the best way I know to do that is to manage the budget as best I can. That, that's where I was coming from, Lynda, but I hear what you're saying, too. I, I didn't know any other way to measure it, that's why I put it in.
Yeah, because, and I, I understand what, I totally understand what you're saying, but I, I think in the past, what I've seen is that we have,
Yeah.
we haven't, we've cut things that maybe shouldn't have been cut. That rather than trying to find ways and, I don't know. I, I guess I just don't know if I like this in here.
I would, I would agree with Lynda in terms of it being a specific percentage. We can't really know that, you know, four years from now, we're not in a hyperinflation situation where, you know, 20% is no big deal. Let's hope not, but, you know, putting a specific percentage in is, I, I'd prefer a different way of saying it, too.
If I could.
Just eliminate.
If I could jump in, so, just to kind of back up a little bit, you know, Inga has done a tremendous job of putting this document together and eliciting kind of information from, from staff and from, from the council. So she put in the information that was provided to her, and, you know, we talked a little bit about it on staff the other day, you know, some of these, and, and that one brought up, you know, discussions as well. So whether we keep it in or keep it out, it's ultimately the council's decision. But from a staff perspective, if we keep it in, I think we need to be more prescriptive as to what that means. Develop a city budget with no more than 6% increase over the previous year. Does that mean no more than a 6% tax rate increase, a 6% levy increase, a 6% expenditure increase, a 6% general fund increase? Because each one of those things is different. And the vast majority of those variables that I just described, the city has absolutely no control over anyways. The only thing that we can control is, is our levy, and that's capped by the state. And if the day comes when we are allowed to increase our levy by 6%, I will, you know, my, my job will be a lot easier. I'm not gonna say I'm gonna jump for joy, but, but. So I think if we're gonna keep something like that in there, I would agree with the comments that it, that it needs to be massaged, because right now, seeing a 6% increase, I'm not even sure how we would effectuate that, because I'm not exactly sure what it means. We, we generally can't increase our expenditures by 6% because of expenditure restraint. We generally can't increase our levy by. We generally can't increase our levy by 6% because of levy limits. If the tax rate increases by 6%, that's, that's, the city has no control over that. Because that's set by equalized value and other overlying taxing jurisdictions percentage within the city of Milton. So, you know, I don't want to put ourselves in a position to fail through no fault of our own. So I think if we're going to keep something like that in there, and I understand all the person lanes comments, they make perfect sense to me. This is exactly where those types of comments should be. But I think we would need to have that, you know, defined a little bit more. Again, because 6%, increase over, over what? So that, that's where I would be. It's hard, it'd be hard to effectuate.
I agree.
And just to dovetail on some of the comments that have been made, I can think of two near-term issues in which, if we just look at the, the overall city budget for getting levy limits and all that stuff. The expenditure restraint inherently keeps us well below that unless, as Bill alluded to, there's hyperinflation or something. Or not even necessarily hyperinflation, but like a 3% to 4% inflation could conceptually put, put us over 6%. But thinking about some of the discussions we've had in the last couple of months regarding the fire department in a referendum, that would obviously push us right over that 6%. And then also thinking about our very successful TID district. And we're looking to, we have to close it by 2026, but state law as written right now allows for adjustments to increase your, your tax levy, which subsequently increases your budget when you close a TID. And it doesn't have any necessary, doesn't have any impact per se on the overall tax rate. But it certainly with $35 to $40 million of value coming off the books in the next five to six years, it could potentially allow us to increase the city budget without having a negative impact on, on the tax rate. So those are just two things that pop to mind immediately that are foreseeable in the near future.
I just want to make sure that, I don't have a problem with removing the percentages or anything. I just want to make sure we have something in our plan that addresses the average taxpayer out there who doesn't understand one bit of what we just discussed.
Larry, I kind of agree to some extent, but I think that honestly that section should be removed as an objective because we have plenty of state things that kind of control the expenditures and stuff, as is mentioned. But also we have our own policies too that we created to help kind of deal with that too. So I think then you start having, you know, abundance of different things that future councils will have to look at, make those decisions rather than having something clear cut like the policies we already created, I think it was earlier this year or was it last year? So kind of got other mechanisms that kind of cover that. So I'm not sure if it's really makes sense to add something like that to also lock us into another area where we're locked into trying to make, when we're trying to make decisions.
And realistically, I think the only thing that would trigger outside of some of these one-off occasions, like I was referencing referendums or, or TID closures or things of that nature would, I'm sure if we look back far enough in the city budget, we could probably find some increases that were greater than 6%, but it was probably largely driven by debt. Because that's the one exclusion that the state allows. And so if, if you're counting debt into the equation, the, some of those other objectives in that section are all about debt reduction and the elimination thereof. So.
Previously, we're moving it.
Previously, we've had conversation as well about things being elsewhere. You know, if they appear once, you know, we may not need to restate them. And in our vision, we've got a line that says, practice sound financial management to maintain a low debt level. Under our values, we've got fiscally responsible as one of the values. So it, you know, I think we're, I think your point, Larry, is to send the public a message that we're being fiscally responsible. And I think combined with what Ryan was saying, we're, we're doing so in our, our values and, and in our vision already.
I agree. I have no problem with.
Is that the consensus then to remove this? Piece then?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else in this section that anyone wants to change or add or anything like that?
Can you scroll up to the goal again?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The only other thing I think I would say, Inga, on the strategies and actions on that first objective, that last bullet point. I believe the debt policy has for replacement of infrastructure and equipment. It's either five or seven years. 10 years, I think, is for like brand new buildings.
So what if this is just changed to continue to follow the established debt policy?
Yeah, that would be.
Maybe that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gets to Ryan's point about how you don't have to kind of cross-reference multiple documents.
So that's more power to our policies. We spent the time creating it. It uses that rather than trying to create a secondary mechanism we have to kind of watch out.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on this piece? Scrolling away. So here's another one, safe inclusive welcoming community to maintain a reputation of being a safe community while improving our efforts to be inclusive and welcoming to all community members. What do we want to do with the maintain? Do we want to keep it or change it?
Enhance, I like.
I don't think we have to get rid of all of the maintains, and this one may be a good one to keep.
But, I mean, we have a good reputation, but we can always improve. So I don't know. Like Bill said, it might be perfectly fine.
Preserve a safe community.
This might be a good place to use Mark Schrader's to enhance our reputation of being a safe community.
I like it.
Always looking to improve. As I said to somebody today, even Aaron Rodgers still goes to practice.
If we use Mark's word, is it billable?
I don't know.
It's probably triple billable.
We'll have to refer back to that affordability piece above then.
A wave of trademark.
That's good because I was really worried about that.
So I included the community conversations piece because that's something that Anisa had started doing this summer and something that I think maybe we'll, maybe want to look at continuing, continuing to do. These are two that Scott had given me. And then Larry, I think you gave me this, these three then, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And Howie, I don't know if you'll know this off the top of your head, but do you know how many trees we currently plant throughout the city each year?
Usually between 30 to 40.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think we, we should be strategic about it too, right?
The whole idea was, I just, I know trees are good for the community. They help cool the community. They help retain water or in our, you know, aquifers. They provide beauty. I just wanted a consistent. Maybe the number isn't really important. It's more that we annually plant trees.
Yeah, that's a clean air type of a thing too, which is, you know, safety is also about clean air.
That might work, Inga.
Something like that. And then the objective, I don't know what that might be like.
Fight climate change.
Do you want to say plant a variety of trees?
Yes, yes.
How we don't end up with some oak disease 35 years from now? The oaks are on sale that year?
I, I don't know if fight climate change. What if, what if we just?
Mitigate, mitigate pollution and other harmful toxins in the environment, maybe?
Yeah. I just, I think I like environment better than climate change because I just feel like everything is all about climate change.
Just make it simple and same, improvement of the environment.
Or save the earth.
Like improvement of the local environment.
That's really good because.
How about beautification of the city, if I can spell it?
That works.
Well, I think it's beautification, but to Larry's point, it's also, and Linda's point, it's also about the environment too.
Clean air and water.
I think it's a theme that's come up multiple times in multiple conversations that the, the goal is really the improvement of the, the local environment. Whether that be air quality, water quality, or beautification, or oxygen levels, or erosion control. I think improvement of local environment is, is really what the theme is, at least in my opinion, based on what I've heard people say. And I think that that's a, that's, that's a goal that isn't too, that isn't super prescriptive, but it gets at the point. And it says to the community that we care about our environment and there are specific actions and strategies that we are taking in order to remain mindful of it.
Does this objective go back to this goal? Or is this maybe a different topic area?
Where would you suggest we put it?
Well, that's what I don't know. That's why I, I don't know if it's another goal.
No, I think it goes back to safe, safe.
I don't, I don't know, though. I, I, it is a little bit outside of that goal.
Well, you know, I think the beautification part fits though with welcoming. You know, the welcoming is, so, you know, it's, it's planned natural environment. And we do it in other ways as well. You know, when somebody comes in with an industrial property, we tell them how many trees they have to have for, you know, the, the edges of that property. And that, that's, I think, built on that welcoming community. We want it to look good.
And I gotta be honest with you, when I was looking for a place to live when I moved down to this area. And this is the truth, and I know you'll laugh, but I chose Milton because of the trees.
It's an avenue?
Yeah, I just give me that hometown, that hometown feeling of boyhood, you know? And I drive into some cities and there's hardly a tree anywhere. It's all concrete and buildings, you know?
So does this make sense for everybody now?
I have a question about the increasing diversity of housing. I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't put as a strategy and action, working, working with government, other, with state, working with state organizations like, like HUD or the organizations that you can work with in order to create affordable housing, which, which also involves the landlords.
Need be habitat for humanity.
Yeah, well, that there's several organizations.
Right.
I, I would add regional, federal, state and regional organizations. You know, I think it's important for us to be working with other communities in Rock County as well on affordability of housing.
Okay. Anything else for this section?
I was just going to throw something out. We could also work with developers, not only a landlord board, but developer. To come up with, I don't know how to fit that in, Inga and the rest of you. You know what I mean? To, to be part of this diverse housing idea.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yep.
Um, I think part of being safe is being accessible. So I know like we're working with our parks to be accessible, our buildings should be accessible. And then like the services that we provide should be accessible as well. I know like the library, we have a long checklist from DPI about making sure our services, our buildings are accessible.
And that might be businesses as well, right?
Yeah. You want to be like friendly to everybody.
Okay.
You guys are one of the most creative groups I've ever worked with as far as changing plans.
I have a question.
Yep.
I had in my notes regarding emergency planning and safety. In previous years, we, in our budgets, we had put for emergency vehicles that we continue to replace one a year or for police cars. And I also wanted to make sure that we also continue to look at staffing for police services. And that we, in order to maintain a safe community, I don't know what the chief has to say about that. But as long as, you know, we fully look at fire emergency, but do we continue to look at police emergency as well on a continuing basis?
We budget for basically one and a half cars per year, and our purchase schedule is two, one year, one the next year. Try to spread those purchases out. That has been working well and is now included in our draft of the capital improvement plan. I am always happy to talk staffing and some of the things that concern me and some of the scenarios. Staffing scenarios that might be possible. Funding is going to be an issue, though.
Well, I mean, when we look at when we look at priorities throughout our budget, we all need to look at that too. What is a priority to us? We can't always just say, I mean, when we look at things locally as well as regionally, state and governmental federally, there are a lot of, a lot of issues. And when we talk about being inclusive, we also have to look at the problems that are related to that. And being safe is not just looking at things ideally. They're also looking at any potential issues that can arise. And are we ready to provide a safe environment? So I, I do want to be sure that we're, we're, we're all recognizing what those issues can possess or present to us.
Yeah, I think if we're to include this, this should go in the next goal down below, which talks about development and stuff like that. Nope, sorry, down another one.
This one?
That one, I think. I think that's better.
This one?
Nope. Development of employees and stuff like that. That one right there, performance organization with professional staff. I think that's where this, if we were to include it, that's where that should go.
Okay, either, either one to, I mean, it's moving too fast for me here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. Just as long as it goes somewhere that we stay on top of it.
Because I think maybe this goal is a little bit more all encompassing because maybe it's a under retention, you know, it's ensuring that our staff has appropriate equipment in order to do their jobs. Whether that's a public work staff member trying to plow the streets to keep all of our citizens safe during a snow event. Whether that's um, a public work staff member trying to plow the streets to keep all of our citizens safe during a snow event. Or making sure that our police car can drive forward in order to um, to assist a, a community member. You know, um, maybe that's something there. I, I don't know what the group thinks.
Yes, I, I saw it the way you saw it, Inga, but I, it's not wrong the way Ryan's saying it either, as long as we all see it the same way. Uh, so we're looking for it in the right place.
I like your idea because um, also with the growth of our community, we have to.
Yes. And it's, it, it's becoming more diverse and um, and as a result, that, I mean, that's wonderful, which is, I can see it in our goals. We're trying to address it in a variety of ways, but this also is a way that we need to continue to address things. So we provide that safety net for everyone.
So does this kind of encompass the, the idea? Or are there other pieces that?
Uh, what else to do?
Sorry, I'll go back down.
No, no, I saw the one about the safety equipment, uh.
So I just added this bullet point that's highlighted right now.
Okay. Okay, and to assess staff.
Levels, right?
What?
Levels, staff levels or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, assess staffing needs. I mean, do we? Do we have staff uh, in the area of law enforcement and uh, meet, what?
Public works, all those areas.
But when I talk about safety.
Right.
Uh, in, yes, and even in public works that can meet the needs of safety in different areas of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, let's jump back up here. I, I think, I think we have everything for the safe, inclusive welcoming community at this point. So then we can jump down to the diverse opportunities for fun and lifelong learning. Um, I just used fun because I think that encompasses our parks, recreation and a lot of other things and tagged in the lifelong learning because that's something we talked about before and um, really is more directed towards the library probably than any other department. And our historic preservation commission and those kinds of things too.
Well, we still have, we have the, you know, Crossridge is a, is a very good educational place.
Yeah, so I did add in an objective of increased promotion of educational opportunities at the Crossridge Park Prairie, just because I think uh, we did talk a little bit about trying to promote or enhance the Crossridge Park Prairie or the prairies in the community in general. And I think through that educational component is the best way to do that. Um, through the, the seed picks and any other kind of engagement opportunities we have. So um, the goal was to maintain our inventory of recreation and lifelong learning opportunities while growing these areas based on the needs and interests of our community members. So not just growing to grow them, not just putting something in, to put something in, but really trying to um, be responsive to what our community members are looking for and needing.
Did you use the word foster, um, foster recreation and lifelong learning opportunities?
Hmm.
I was trying to think of another word for ma- maintain.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Thought someone else had another word. Is this a good place to put sustain, Bill?
Let someone else.
Yeah, uh.
I hadn't come up with anybody.
You've got two ideas going on here. Um, I think we're trying to sustain our inventory of recreation and we're trying to increase, um, you know, the, 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 the if the inventory of recreation is tied up with park kinds of things, I, you know, I think that's bundled in here and we're kind of mixing um, that uh, you know, inventory to me is a list of assets. And the parks are part of those assets. Uh, the lifelong learning opportunities is kind of a little bit different than that. Um, uh, I don't mind the maintaining our parks or sustaining, um, but somehow there's a mixture here.
I like enhance instead of maintain. Because it's always being improved. Because there's always gonna be new recreation, you know, like, well, like skateboarding. Or um, you have a couple of them on here, the disc golf, you know? There wasn't disc golf 20 years ago when everybody was playing basketball. And so I, I think that we need to, because this is a future document, I think that we need to to put tho, put that together as something that we're doing now and will continue to do.
If we took the words while growing these areas out, would that help address what Linda and Bill may be talking about? Does that make sense? I mean, I think maybe that's what messes me up. If we remove all growing these and then just have it happen.
Now, I'm.
Based on the needs, you know, based on the needs and interests of the community members. So it simplifies it a little bit.
I guess, um, my thought process was that I think we need to ensure that we're maintaining our recreation equipment and spaces and making sure that they don't become dilapidated or anything like that. Make sure that people can continue to enjoy them. Howie? Oh, you're on mute. I'm sorry. You're still on mute, Howie.
There we go. Um, maybe you could use something like improve and modernize our inventory because that would take care of current and future possibly.
But yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, I was just trying to reduce the number of words.
I like that.
I think, I think we've still got that mixture though, and because uh, it's the, the maintaining, um, uh, the stuff that Howie's talking about is kind of recreational facilities, parks and recreational facilities. And then we've got recreational and lifelong learning opportunities. Um, uh, and they're kind of two different ideas. We need them both. Um, uh, but it's, it's almost like two different sets there.
Do we need to have inventory in there? To improve and modernize our recreation and lifelong learning opportunities while growing growing based on?
I was saying recreational facilities, because that would be parks, it would be uh, pavilions, it would be you know, uh, fields, sports fields and so on. Um, uh, and then uh, whether we use recreational again, it's recreational and lifelong learning opportunities. Because there are recreational opportunities as well as recreational facilities.
Right.
And so we want to increase and increase recreational and lifelong learning opportunities.
A commitment to continuous improvement is starting to sound like a value in this discussion.
Oh.
Whether that's facilities, land, staff. That's been kind of the theme you all have been talking about recently.
What's another word for opportunities? What's the, oh. Well, that's not helpful. Chances, occasions, openings, breaks, prospects.
What about? What about options? That didn't work that time.
Like that?
How about instead of and like lifelong learning options with lifelong?
Anissa, were you trying to say something? We didn't hear you. We still can't hear you. I, I don't know what's going on. It doesn't look like you're muted.
I, and wrap this up because uh, the community is gonna have an opportunity to, to look at this and provide input and if, you know, we, we can kind of look at this outside of the, the meeting, um, because we can wordsmith all night long. Well, we can, but I can't.
So maybe instead of spending too much, so much time wordsmithing, maybe it'd make more sense for us to spend the time just making sure all the objectives are objectives we want. That make sense? I, I know that I wanna add in, there's something I was talking to my wife about. She kind of mentioned that a lot of parks don't necessarily, or some of the parks don't necessarily have like shaded areas for people to sit when their kids are playing in the park or something like that. I think Crossridge was an example she used. So I think that's something maybe add in here is make sure there's, you know, uh, shaded location at each park or something. I'm not sure exactly how to add that, but.
And that's something too, we can put into the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Okay.
Cause that's going to be completed around the same time this strategic plan will be.
Okay.
So I'll add that as a comment.
Just curious, the ones without an objective down below, could those also kind of go into that?
Yeah, I think um, this one for sure could go into the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Um, the this one maybe can go up here.
That works.
Yeah, another, um, another strategy or action, I know this is one that I've uh, talked to Linda about at one point is the idea of enhancing walkability by having more public benches.
Okay.
Bill and wheelchair racks.
Yep.
I couldn't read this one.
And, and what was that?
He said wheelchair rack.
Oh. Okay.
Like the idea of your fun signs. Since everybody's counting their steps, maybe we could, you know, we, you don't have to put this down, but just like have like if you wanna walk 10,000 steps, here's a route for you.
I, I saw these signs like, I, maybe in an article or something and it was you know, 100 more steps to the drinking fountain, you know, it just, on things like that, I thought could enhance the, the trail for, for the hikers.
That would be good for the Ice Age Trail.
Yeah. Yeah, so maintain the partnership with Ice Age Trail and improve the trail system in the city of Milton where possible. And these, I think, could probably go into the outdoor recreation plan too, but we can we can figure that out. Okay. And here is this next one, high performing organization with professional staff to increase recruitment and retention efforts to ensure a professional workforce to provide high quality services to all community members. I don't know where everyone's at, so I'm gonna stop moving the screen.
The only, the only thing I want to add in there, and I don't know how to do it, but you could think about it and we can put it together later on maybe, but is about, related to council development. Um, I, I, I just thought of this idea when I came on board. If we can somehow create a opportunity for community people to, I know we give them opportunities to be on committees, but somehow to give people interested in being on city council, maybe a year or two from now, and they would chat or mentor with a felt, with a current council member, just to, like that. Um, I, I would like to continue the wonderful council we have in the future. Yes, that's right. We work well together. We're very respectful of each other and the various views we have. And we finally do come to conclusions in the end. And I think any way we can continue that would be helpful. You see a lot of communities getting deep turmoil with two or three key council members choose not to run again. And it causes a lot of stress on the council. Just an idea. Thank you.
Yep, that's a good idea, Larry.
And then we probably should add something in there as far as the council and the, the employees, um, utilizing um, the League of Wisconsin workshops, League of Municipality.
Wisconsin League of Municipalities, yeah, I really try to promote those workshops and offerings and encourage people to attend. I think this year it'll be a lot easier in a sense because it's all gonna be probably by Zoom.
I do have, um, create formal professional development plans for all employees, just to be a little bit more, I don't know, strategic or a little bit more, um, I don't know. I, I don't know what the right word is at 7:47 at night. But purposeful maybe with some of the, the um, promotion of some different training opportunities for our employees and council.
Career paths or something?
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for this section?
Oh, that looks pretty good.
Okay. Then this is our last one, um, environment for business success with thoughtful growth and development. To maintain economic development efforts in the Crossroads Business Park and increase small business retention strategies while creating an environment where businesses can be successful.
I could be convinced otherwise, but why are we being so specific to say Crossroads Business Park in the goal? Um, you know, we want to, um, you know, our, our strategies are, our, our goal is broader than just Crossroads.
That's a good point, Bill. Yeah, because we, we actually do have a West Side Industrial Park as well.
I was gonna say that too.
There's really no, there's real no possibilities for development at this time. Land ownership could change and that could, you know, that could change tomorrow. So it's a good point.
I don't think we should, we shouldn't lose Crossroads. It just moves down, you know, a level into the objectives.
Because we don't know the future, basically.
How about current and future business parks?
Like that? Like that? To maintain economic development efforts for future and current business parks and increase small business retention strategies while creating. A, an environment where businesses can be successful.
I, I'd maybe say in current and future, I'd flip them. Instead of for future and current. In. Current and future.
Yeah.
That looks good.
I'm good with it.
Okay. So then there's just a handful here. Um.
I have a question about the taxpayers taking. All the risk. What, I don't know what that means.
I think that was one that Dan gave me. Do you want to give a little background?
Yeah. So with that, what I'm thinking is, and we do a good job of it now. But when we, when we craft our developer agreements, just making sure that. There are ways that they can be structured that. If the development or the entity goes bankrupt and the city has paid all the incentives upfront. The, essentially the taxpayers have, have taken on a majority of the risk for that, uh, development. So continuing to make sure that that is looked at.
Do we need to specify in to districts? Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. It's there. It's like.
Does that help answer the question, Anisa?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Okay. Now I was trying to keep the, the, the action fairly generic. Um. But I can't even think of an incentive that we've done that wasn't in a T. Can you, Al?
No, no, I, we wouldn't really have that opportunity to do that other than. I mean, I guess if you want to say facade loans or residential exterior improvement grants. But even those are tied to a TIF. So, yeah, we really don't have the ability to do non-TIF related incentives. Unless we did something new with our budget in the general fund.
That's what I was getting caught up in was I was stuck in thinking of tip and TIP stuff, so.
And we, you know, when I look at that, uh, it used to be the fourth box down here, create the, the $5,000 revolving loan for a new business startup. Believe it was two years ago, we, we actually have a fund with, I think, 20 or $25,000 in it. For, um, small business revolving loan type things. That's a, that's a local initiative. I believe 5,000 was put in by, or 15,000, I think, was put in by the city of. Milton and 5,000 by First Community Bank and, and 5,000 by Bank of Milton, if memory serves me right on the allocation. Um, so we do have, uh. I believe the council approved the, the revised language. Eighteen months ago, maybe, or even 24 months ago now.
Yeah, that's about, it's about right. Yep.
I'm the one who put that in. I, I don't think the average business would hold their nose about that. Uh, because I've forgotten about it. So that was my idea, but, um, if we've already got it, then I guess we got to promote it.
Sure. So, so maybe it's a matter of communicating or partnering with the chamber or something like that.
Yeah, the. The difficulty is, is that the cost of money is so cheap right now.
I know.
That there's no reason for anybody to, to look for that type of, uh, promotion. I mean, obviously the banks are very knowledgeable of that, of that, of that program. And, you know, so they sell it too. We. You know, I talked to Dave Holtermann about it and Brendan Wilkinson and Dan Honold and, um, you know. It's just at this time, there's no, there's no, um. Appetite for it. Yeah, but that doesn't mean that six months or eighteen months from now that that's not going to change. It, it likely could. So. Yeah, that program does exist. It's just, um, it's one that is not. People go with the facade grants a lot more often because that's, it's not a loan, it's a grant.
But I, I think in general, we could. Do a better job of promoting that program, but also the facade grants and, um, small business incubator services in the region, those kinds of things we could, we could do more of.
Mm hmm. Oh, that's cool. I forgot to hold that. I appreciate you guys reminding me.
Do we need to put something in here, um, as far as the work that we do with the chamber on some of this stuff? That's questions for you, Al.
Good. Give me an example.
The chamber, the chamber is working with all of our local businesses just as much as. But e- even more so than this, than the city does sometimes. And that's not a bad thing.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I just was. What? I was, I was, what would be an example of? Of, of an objective or a strategy to. In, enhance our relationship with the chamber or. Partner, partner more with the chamber. Do you have some ideas?
We do have the J CBB partnership in there that we're both, that the city and the chamber are both a part of.
But this is a Milton document and we've got Jamesville area visitors bureau. So should we have? The Milton area Chamber of Commerce actually listed?
Well, we're, I, I guess in this instance, um. MAC is a part of that partnership. And I guess if, if MAC decided not to be a part of that partnership, I assume. The city would want to still be contracting with J CBB for those tourism services. It is getting late, so we can continue to think about it too. And we can always add in, um, items at the meeting on the 29th, or if anyone has any other. Um, pieces that they'd want to see included or changed, then you can email me too.
I think that's a good idea to wrap up.
What was that, Linda?
I said, that sounds good.
Okay.
Wrapping it up now. We're going to start team building at the beginning of the council meeting. Thank you, everyone, though, for your efforts, for your thoughtfulness, for your attention, your devotion, taking it serious and really being part of a process. I know it's late. I know it's hard to stay awake. It's hard to think. It's really hard for me to think. At this hour too. So I really do want to thank you and Inga for all the effort you put in. Um, is there any committee reports?
Um, just quick for Parks and Rec, we had the public input meeting scheduled for last Thursday. Unfortunately, we didn't have any members of the public attend. But, um, I have received, I believe, sixty-five survey responses. So that's, that's a lot better than the, the twenty I got the last time that I tried to do it. So. I'm happy with that and I'm going to be going through that information and. Trying to put together something for the Parks and Recreation Commission to review at their meeting on September 21st.
Any other committee reports? Thanks, Inga. Okay, staff reports? Howard, I'm just going by who's on my screen and what order.
Okay, um, not a lot of the ordinary. Just the Jamesville project, continuing code enforcement. Uh, and just, just the regular ordinary fall items that are going on now.
Okay, thank you. Scott? Chief?
Just a update on some of our initiatives. Got a guy at, in Jefferson this week doing CIT. Um, crisis intervention training involving working with people. In crisis with mental health issues and other situations. So. Um, we're going to, gonna continue to get our staff trained up in there.
Are you waving goodbye, Howard?
No, I, I had one more after Scott was done.
Oh. I just saw you're waving and you're leaving. Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted.
Um, next Thursday is Donnie's last day.
Oh, okay.
Hmm.
Okay. Any, anything else, chief?
And, and ju- just quick too, for, for Donnie's retirement, his family did put together a little, um. I don't know, reception, I guess I'll call it, um, for him at the Public Works Garage. So if you'd like to stop by and just wish him well on his last day, I think he'd appreciate that.
Can you give, can you send out a reminder email? It's not tomorrow, right? Or Thursday? Is it Thursday?
No, it's the 20th.
Okay.
Twenty-fourth, the time. That would be perfect.
Mark E.
Not a whole lot. Rained a lot last week, so not much progress was made on Jamesville Street.
All right, thanks for the weather update. Dan?
I don't have much. Uh, we're starting to put together the budget. We've got, so far we've gotten fairly good news. Um, the state aid numbers are remaining flat. Health insurance increases were pretty minimal. Um, so. So far, so good.
Just stop right there. Thank you, Dan. You know how superstitious I am. Everybody's starting knocking on wood right now. Ashley?
Uh, we have our new employees, Marika, starting on Thursday. And then we extend an offer to another person for the position left by Cassie. So we will be fully, fully staffed by the end of September.
That's exciting. Thanks. Al?
Not a whole lot more than what folks have already added. Just continue to do. Um, the economic development work behind the scenes and that is still continuing to clip along at a pretty good pace. We should have some. Site plans on October agendas, at least two that we know of already, potentially three. And, um. That budget season, uh, I agree with Dan, we've gotten some surprising news and that's encouraging. But it probably just means that next year's budget's going to be all that tougher, but I think we say that every year. Uh, so, you know, we'll keep plugging along. Election coming up on November 3rd. Supreme Court ruled last night, the ballots are not going to change. So that means they don't have to be reprinted, which is good. Uh, but I think it probably cost us a day maybe in processing. Um, I'm not sure. I haven't heard an update from the N today in, in terms of that, but, uh. Uh, that it's good that it didn't have to kind of go back to square one. So. Yeah. Hopefully everybody stands safe.
Yeah. Encourage.
Oh.
Dan?
Take you backing off, Al. It sounds like, uh, the absentees are actually getting mailed tomorrow. They got them all stuffed. The postage just needs to go on them. So.
Nice. And, uh, Inga continues to put out election information on our, uh, city website. So if you're on social media, please share that and get the word out. It ha-. The posts are, uh, have very good information about dates, absentee voting, registering to vote, bring your ID, like all sorts of things. I just encourage you, um. Share those, base those on social media to keep the word out. Um. And, you know, going along with our theme of, you know, our goal of being an inclusive and welcoming community. I want you all to know that it is Hispanic Heritage Month this month. So this would be a good time to, you know, do some research, educate yourself, read some books. And I just want to thank everybody again for tonight and your strategic planning. And I don't think I have anything else. Like I feel like I do and I'm not remembering it, so we're not going to wait for my memory to kick in. I'm going to let you all go. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Just a reminder.
Yes.
Special meeting, September 29th.
Yes. Yep.
At what time?
Six.
Six PM. All those in favor of adjourn?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Who actually did the motion and the second for the adjournment?
Mark Schrader and Chief Mark Ward.
That move we adjourned.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you.
I made that motion two hours ago, but I was on mute.
You and a few other people. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you again. Stay safe.
Thank you.